I just got rid of Clean Choice Energy, which I've been shackled to, which apparently is a bit of a, you know, I went into it. Oh, you know about them? It took me. I didn't know, so I was trying to do the right thing in two thousand.
You can start the meeting whenever you like.
So, um, since it is five thirty, I would like to call to order the meeting of the Board of Architecture Review of November eighteenth, twenty twenty four. Welcome all. Present here are Christopher Gao, Rob McWilkin, myself, Stephanie Rinza, and Julie Reed has been slightly delayed by traffic, but she'll be joining us in a moment. And thank you, Desiree, for taking minutes today, and thank you, John, also for being here. Um, I understand that neighbors have been noticed on all applications except five and six, but we can still proceed with the, um, initial discussions.
Just five.
Okay.
Just five.
Okay. Um. So I'm also checking with our board members whether there are any conflicts of interest or anyone wants to be recused on any of the applications.
None.
Okay, so, um, Ca- Karen, would you like to come up and as case number one for tonight?
Good evening.
Hello.
Well, at the last meeting, you received a conditional approval pending, uh, providing the spec- the species of, uh, the native hedge and the riparian border. I sent these in. I received an email from John Ledwith on Wednesday saying that two members of the bar. I was under the understanding, based on what you had said, and immediately prior to three members unanimously voting in favor of a conditional tree removal, that it would just require specification of the species, which, which could have been done in the form of an email, and I'd be happy to play, uh, the recording, starting at minute nine, uh, fifty-nine, if you would like to refresh your memories, but I did that, and I received an email from Mr. Ledwith saying that, um, that was not sufficient for two members of the bar, and that I would need to provide the exact numbers of, um, plants, and I, I don't know what. So, um, I asked then for a, uh, exactly where it is in these guidelines or the village code, exactly where that is. And I received from all of you, as well as the Mr. Ledwith, the advisor to all the boards. This is not a new document. It's been around since two thousand twelve. Um, and because I read the village code and I read this, and I don't see it. Um, so, I hope that you are, will agree that we have provided what is, has been asked for, and that this will be a short meeting. I'm guessing it's not going to be, so I would like.
We're hoping it's gonna be short. I, I hope so too.
We'd just like to know where the border is going to be.
I would first like to read, um, the taxpayer-funded village arborist report.
We don't need to do that.
Well, actually, I.
We need to move up. We need to address your concerns and where we are.
Concerns are actually addressed. I know why you two don't want me to read it, but I would like to.
No, it's, it's not like to read it.
Because I need to create a record, because we are either.
Have to provide a substantial riparian buffer.
Thank you.
I think he just needs to know where it is. That's all. It's not a big requirement.
Miranda, come back and spend twelve hours with you. You can explain to her where you have.
Well, let's run to here the time. Let me, let me tell you. Where we are. Let me summarize for, for, so that we're all on the same page, so we can move forward. We can agree, have a compromise.
You voted. You said that all would be required. All that would be required was an email.
Sir, can, no, sir, can I finish? I'm getting us all on the same page.
Which was exactly, we have it on a recording, and then you voted.
I'd like to get us all on the same page, so we can understand the gravity of the issue. There are forty-two, forty-three trees that you'd like to remove. Twenty-three are more than five inches in diameter, and they're right by the water, so that is a serious problem, because those trees are native evergreens. They, they photosynthesize all winter, so they're providing oxygen, converting from CO2, and they're retaining water. So they're very functional, as well as, as, we don't need to talk about the aesthetics, but that's the function. So if we agree to removing those, we need to have a compromise. We need a replacement. So what we're offering is, please, could you provide a riparian buffer? So we need to see where the riparian buffer is. So that's, so let's, if, if you're agreeing that we do a riparian buffer, is that, should we start there? Are you agreeing?
I think I'd like to start where, where I'd like to start, where I said I'd like to start. I'd first like to start with reading this into the record, because, um, in the past two weeks, I have been overwhelmed with phone calls and emails, and when Said pulled this up, there's been over a hundred and something views of this, of the last meeting that we attended. Um, so first, I'd like to start by reading this, since I sat through an hour of hearing about how restoring gardens are performing arts, and how stone walls don't really, aren't, are much less important in Tuxedo Park. Okay, okay, I'd be happy to. October fourteenth, uh, this is addressed to the village of Tuxedo Park. Attention, Stephanie Rinza. Dear Ms. Rinza, an appointment to review Karen and Said Hider's application to remove and replace hemlock trees in their tea garden at one nineteen Turtle Point Road place on Friday, October eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, from three to four P M. The following is a summary of that inspection. Observations: The Hiders came to the Board of Architectural Review seeking approval rather than proceeding at their own risk, and having been transparent with all of their efforts. Two, the Hiders hired a recognized tree expert, which is Davies, and landscape architect Miranda Brooks to provide documentation of the present condition of the trees and to provide a detailed plan for restoration of the tea garden. Three, the existing hemlock trees do require annual pesticide treatment for insect problems. There is a concern of contamination of the adjacent water supply. Four, the hemlocks are not one hundred years old. The nineteen twenties photo of the garden do not show hemlocks in the picture. I estimate the age of the hemlocks to be fifty to sixty years old. Since the spacing of the hemlocks is approximately four feet on center, it is presumed that the original planting of the hemlocks was intended to be maintained as a hedge, no more than eight to ten feet in height. The hemlocks are now approximately forty feet plus in height. The backside of the hemlocks is sparse due to being shaded out, deficient maintenance in the past, and insect infestation. This is an unsustainable situation. Five, this is a private garden. The only exposure to outsiders is from the lake. It is self-contained and does not visually impact other properties. Six, there is ongoing damage to the historic wall from the root system of the hemlocks. Seven, the Hiders are open to using a native hedge species as a replacement to the hemlocks. The original presumed design for the garden was that the hemlocks would be maintained as a hedge. Eight, the removal and replacement of the hemlocks will not affect runoff or erosion onto this or adjacent properties. Recommendation: I recommend that this application be approved. Shall I read the certification?
Yeah.
I'd, I'd be happy to. I certify to the best of my knowledge and belief that the statements of fact contained in this report are true and correct, that opinions and evaluation and conclusions are limited only by the reported assumptions and limiting conditions, and that they are my personal, unbiased, professional analysis, opinions and conclusions. I have no personal or prospective interest in the subject of this report, and have no personal interest or bias with respect to the parties involved. My compensation is not contingent upon the predetermined direction or outcome which favors either party. My analysis, opinions, conclusions were developed, and this report was prepared in conformity with standard arboricultural practice. And it is signed by John D. Linson, the handpicked arborist by you two. Um, this report was delivered to Stephanie Rinza, the chairperson, on October fourteenth. It was not simultaneously sent to all the bar or John Ledwith. Is that correct, Mr. Ledwith?
Correct.
Okay, and I was also told by Mr. Linson that you attempted to get him to remove everything except, um, all references that were positive to us, the fact that the trees were not a hundred years old.
Mistake, and so let me just, okay.
May I finish? May I finish? Thank you. Okay, and that you were only interested in whether the trees were dead and in a soap, um, some, some type of treatment. We're not interested in treating these trees. So it's really improper for you to have kept this to yourself. Christopher, did you receive a copy of this at that time? Okay, so it was only Stephanie.
Freedom Information Act requires outstanding, so we'll find out the truth soon enough. Unless it was.
I'm gonna continue on.
Okay, all right, okay, good.
That was highly improper of you.
All right.
And the mayor said it was improper of you. Mr. Ledwith told me it was improper of you. Not really sure whether you should be voting on this matter. You seem to be, um, very, very passionate about this issue. Uh, and somewhat, um, you seem to be ignoring the taxpayer-funded arborist report that, and the recommendations, as are you, Christopher, uh, and we have done everything. I have spent thousands of extra dollars.
Are you gonna finish, or are you gonna just keep going, or? Let me know when you're finished. Okay, let me know when you're finished. It's going on a little bit here.
Okay, so I have now, yes, and I do not want to spend much more time here.
Okay, good.
I have provided the replacement species, okay? He does not mention a riparian border, by the way. I'm willing to put one in, but he does not mention the need for it. And these are the choices that the, that the bar has at this point. You can approve our application. I, I've sent these on Wednesday, um, of a native hedge and plants that Miranda is planning on using on a riparian border. Um, I am not going to spend more time delineating the number of plants for you and the exact placement at this point, because I don't see anything in these guidelines that require me to do so. I've already spent, I'm not done yet. I, you will have your chance in one moment. Okay, so these are the choices. Please, either approve our application so we can move on, or deny it so we can move to the B Z A, because that is the only way this application can move forward.
And we've already, you've already voted, by the way, so excuse me, you've already voted this app, this application through, subject to a precedent, a condition precedent, which was, and we have a video of it saying, where Rob McWilkin says, you could satisfy this as easy as just sending an email with the list of plants and stuff. And then, immediately after that, with no objection, you voted it through three to zero. So as far as we're concerned, you've already approved it.
Okay, so.
Because it's been approved, and no further votes required.
So, to get us all on the same page, what we require for this big ask of removing trees, which the D E C, the Development of Environmental Conservation, every organization knows that trees are the most important thing to act as a filter by a body of water. The village has benefited from private individuals, and the village here has benefited greatly from the D E C Trees for Trips program, where they give free trees to people to plant by water tributaries and lakes. So that's, so his claim that it has no effect on water is, is unfortunately wrong.
This is your expert.
He's been fired. He's not, he's.
Because you didn't like what he said.
No, because.
So you fired him for disagreeing with him.
No, because that, that's, that's all irrelevant. The, where we are now to get up to speed is that we're asking for.
Didn't he get fired because he wouldn't alter his report?
Did I finish? We're asking for the, because of this big ask, I have, my, all my time here, I have never been asked a homeowner to remove forty-four trees by the lake.
To remove forty-four trees. Um, many of those trees are not within your jurisdiction.
I'm saying, you, you are removing forty-four trees.
I have, oh, I have close to a thousand trees on my property.
I know. You are removing forty-four trees.
Planting many more trees.
You are removing forty-four trees by the lake, and that sets a very bad precedent. So we're saying, yes, you can remove those trees if you give us a riparian buffer. Now, we just need to know where the riparian buffer is, how wide it is, what we're, what we're signing off on. We can't just say a rip- a riparian buffer. So that's all we, so we have a map here, and so we can, if we just mark it on here and agree on where it is, and then we're all good, and then we can move forward with it. And then you can go to the next step, to the, um, B O T. They can vote on it, and then.
It's next to the water.
Okay, let, well, in these, we just, in these meetings, we, we.
I'm not the landscape architect, okay, and I'm not spending another, I, I'm not spending more money. I mean, Christopher, I, I have hired.
Could I interject? Could, could I interject for a second? What, Christopher, would you consider to be numerically the minimum sort of depth in feet of a riparian border that could achieve the desired and necessary ends? Would it be five feet deep? Would it be seven feet deep? Is there a number?
Hundred feet deep?
Is there, is there a number that we can specify? Um, just say, along the frontage of the lake, you know, for some, you know, one hundred, two hundred feet. I'm not sure what the frontage.
We actually have plants already there. It's, there's only a very small area where we don't have anything.
So if we could isolate that, that area, Karen, um, and say, you know, five feet deep with, with said species as furnished by email and, uh, and a hard copy with cover photographs, all of which look great, by the way.
Thank you, Rob.
Is, is there a, is there a depth that we could specify? I guess that's my question.
Because we need specific, there's a misunderstanding already about the right bearing buffer, because we, if we have a plan, then.
But Christopher, could, hold on, hold on, hold on.
How much are you charged to be the landscape architect?
Can I please?
Not a landscape.
I, I asked.
Exactly.
Hold on.
So, so one second.
Hold on. I asked you a question, and I would like an answer. Is there a depth that we can give them?
Are you asking me? Oh, sorry.
Correct.
Yes.
That was.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Directed to you. Can we simplify this meeting by giving clear instructions?
We can provide that for you. We can suggest it.
I don't want to discuss this. Is there a number that we can give that will
Let me mark it.
expedite this meeting?
May I suggest?
You can do whatever you want, you know?
So here, for clarity, so we're all on the same page. I'm gonna put something on, on, on.
You can, but I, I, you can, you can put whatever, whatever there. I, I'm not agreeing to anything without, I hired, you know, and a world expert, and I'm now getting gardening advice from you.
No, no, I'm, I'm, the world expert is not here. Normally, every applicant comes with a landscape architect, and so we can have this discussion. If we can't have.
Actually, I've watched a lot of these things. A lot of people don't come with landscape architect.
With something as serious, right from the get-go, when we had the site visit, we told you that this was going to be a big ask. So we tried to compromise and do this riparian buffer, and so here's the, here's the, this is the hedge running here, correct? Well, here's the historic, here's the historic hedge you're recreating, is that correct? From the nineteen twenties, Town and Country?
Yes.
Okay. So.
Which has no trees.
So I think from here, it goes there.
No, it, it doesn't, it, the trees end right there, because Mr. Swanson took out all these trees.
I'm seeing, I'm sorry, I'm putting your, the push that you're putting in, you're recreating.
Took out, he took out on the other side, the other alley of trees. He, he wiped out like seventy percent of them to put a big Italian fountain.
I'm trying to do the work on behalf of Miranda of what she's planning, so we can actually visualize it. But unfortunately, she's not here, so we're gonna have to make do, so I can see.
It's eleven thirty in, in London, or wherever she is, but yes.
So. I believe it goes here, is that correct? And then the historic bushes come out there and there. So this is what is being recreated, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I would suggest, so you got this beautiful view from here, as, as you see from this image here. And so here, between this, between the hedge and, and the border, this, you leave that open there to recreate that historical view there. That's open, so the riparian buffer is along here.
How many feet would that be, Christopher? You think like a hundred, or?
No, that, that would be.
Depth, not, not.
The, the depth there would be.
Well, I'm at the line.
Yeah, oh, okay.
Well, the.
No, it's certainly not a hundred feet.
No, it's not.
Be more like fifty, or?
No, it's even less than that. A, a, a normal riparian buffer recommended by the D E C is fifty feet. That's not practical with gardens, uh, with something like this. But this, this, so, you know, it's, it's custom. It's not off the rack. So with this beautiful garden, this historic, uh, um, recreation, there, there are the hedges there. So I would just do the riparian buffer behind this. That's it. That's all I'm asking for.
So, so I'm gonna interject again. So the total length that the riparian buffer would be X, and the depth would be Y. Can you insert numbers to the X and the Y, Christopher?
We'd have to look at that one.
I mean, I.
In terms of what would satisfy the board?
It's, it's where, it's where, it's according to, here's another. Well, the only with the map that was supplied that we have to work on is this. As I say, normally, you know, the, the landscape architects provide, I mean, your neighbor.
We're not building a building. We're not building a house.
Well, you're, Mr. Swanson owned the garden next to you, um, Turtle Point.
As you said, we're, we're dealing with a quote-unquote couture issue, and we're dealing with our issue, not, not other people's.
Well, it's, it's the same.
Conveniently, you like to just only deal with ours when it's convenient for you, so let's not talk about other people.
It's the same garden. It's Mr. Swanson's garden, continued to Turtle Point next to you.
No, they're quite different.
And they had, they brought a plan. Owen Van Sweden brought a plan there, the people that did the native garden, the New York potential gardens, and their plan was twenty-two pages, so we, it was crystal clear what was going to happen. There were no misunderstandings. There were no arguments.
There. They, they've built a lot of things that weren't on that plan.
They built a, they built a, they built a big, they built a big.
So.
No, we're not talking about indoor garden. They've built things that weren't there.
The point is, if we have some, if the point is, if we have something.
Stick to one thing when you want.
If, the point I'm trying to make is, if we have it crystal clear what the plan is, instead of us interpreting, instead of you interpreting, then we're, then we're fine, so there's no misunderstandings.
I would just like to simplify this, because we did have a resolution in the last meeting, and it was that we are signing off on the removal of the twenty-three, uh, diseased hemlocks, eighty percent diseased hemlocks. Um, and so long as the applicant could produce specifics on what they're replacing, the, the row of hemlocks with, and a riparian border. And so I think we're very, very close here. I think all that we need is the clarity of, again, X and Y. Is it, is it twenty-five feet length, uh, you know, of, of frontage on, on Tuxedo Lake? Is it thirty-five feet? We, that, I would love to just nail that down, and then nail down the minimum depth. That is to say, five feet or something, that will satisfy the board for water filtration purposes. And forgive me for raising my voice. I just was trying to.
On the hill above us who cut down their night, uh, trees and caused all this water runoff. Nothing happens to them.
Prefer not to, to, to talk more.
Picture their house from before, and a picture of their house.
Please.
I, I would like to just.
Say please.
I would like to boil, Miss, I would like to just boil this down to what's gonna advance your project, your beautiful project that we believe in, and we.
But we've met the, we met exactly what was discussed at the last meeting.
There's just this one missing piece of information that I think is going to satisfy both sides, and let's try to come to a constructive agreement here.
We're almost there.
So it's what? I'm just gonna throw out a number. Thirty feet of frontage on the lake, since I'm not hearing any specifics, and a minimum of five feet depth of riparian border. Can we sign off on that? Can we get a resolution on that?
And then we can move forward. We can, we can remove the condition. We can fully approve it. You can leave.
You have to vote for it again.
No, we, we, there's a condition to satisfy the condition. It's not approved until. So we'll just. No, no, we want, we want to approve it. We want to make sure legally, everything is approved for you, so you can move, so we can move forward.
This, this resolution is to say that the board is satisfied that the conditions have been met as to last meeting's resolution.
So what? So thirty feet, we can say?
I, I, I.
From it.
That's, you can, you can say that. I mean, I, I don't know what it is exactly.
Well, this would be helpful if we had it on the plan, but it's not, so let's, let's work from here, that this, this is.
Is there a landmark?
This, well, this is where the, 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 so where on, uh, where the wall ends and the bush, the bush on Miranda's plan, I think it's underneath there, where, like, follow the outline. So where the wall ends, between there and there, there and there, and then, say, ten feet from the edge here, it's a riparian.
There's already, there's already plants. There are already plants there.
Right, and there, there are some plants, but it's not a riparian buffer. Ten foot of riparian with the plants that you kindly, that Miranda kindly supplied.
I don't know that I'm digging those up.
So we have to dig up our other plants, like, there's all these water lilies, tide water lilies, lilies and other things. They're all, like, oriented, so people on boats see them from the outside, not for us to see them.
Right, no, I would, I, I, no, no, I would rip, add these species to it.
Just have, like, Miranda come up here for a day and spend the day.
And spend the entire day with you, and just so you could. I'd love it if you was here, so you could have your ego struck. That's all. So that we can have a, a constructive conversation, instead of having to go back and forth.
Accord from London. They don't have Concord anymore, but.
Well, it's, it's your choice of who you picked. It's not our, uh, you know, it's not our, um, uh, it's an inconvenience. So ten-foot riparian, and then between the hedge and the wall, the, uh, the wall, the edge of the, um, lake, we have the, the species that you provided. That's the compromise. If you're willing to, I think that's a very fair ask for all these trees. If you want, if, if you agree with that, you sign a date.
That's fine, but don't mention forty-something trees, because several of them are not within your jurisdiction. I'm not asking you to remove them.
Well, luckily, that's irrelevant to, to this discussion.
While Christopher keeps bringing them.
But let's not, let's not.
If, if you want me to clarify, I can, but it's, as I say, we're, we've moved forward, and we're, we're talking about the riparian buffer. We want you to be able to leave now, knowing that we've blessed it, and you can move forward.
And I think we're there.
Right.
If, if, if this is acceptable, ten-foot riparian buffer here.
Length.
Ten foot in, in width from the, from.
In depth, yeah.
From the, from the water inwards, ten feet.
That was five a few minutes ago.
Yes, ten feet here, I've written ten feet.
Well, that was a guess. I was, I, I didn't hear a depth, so I was asking what is, is ten feet.
Be to the end of the shrub. How's that?
And then here.
Which is probably somewhere.
Which is whatever it is, between the edge of the, the, the hedge and the, the lake.
Great, that makes sense.
Do you like to redo that and sign that, and then we can approve?
Great.
But the, the day's date is the eighteenth.
The eighteenth, yeah.
Yes. Take these trees down on George Washington's birthday, because it's a real American.
So, thank you so much. We've come to a wonderful compromise, and so we can now, uh, vote to remove this condition and to give you full approval, uh, with your beautiful plan. I'd like to propose that we vote to remove the conditional approval for the Hider property at, what's the address?
One nineteen Turtle Point Road.
One nineteen Turtle Point Road, as specified on the amended document signed by Karen Hider on the eighteenth of November, November, two thousand twenty-nine, on pay, on drawing number L one zero one, illustrating a ten-foot riparian buffer from the edge of the water inwards, um, and the, in the area beyond the hedge, and between the area of the hedge and the water, um, a full riparian buffer with a gap, um, for the, um, the view, the view line from the, the tea shed.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Have a unanimous vote?
Great. Um, Rob and Julie, I'd like to thank you for your diplomatic attempts to, to rein things in, and I'm sorry that you had to witness. I don't want to forget bringing you in.
Well, let me just finish by saying that Karen, at no point did I have any personal agenda whatsoever, so we're sworn to uphold the rules. We had to swear to that. And within that, I strive really hard to help every applicant as much as I possibly can to create the most beautiful result for their home. That's all I ever wanted to do. So there was, if you think there was an attempt at falsifying a report, it, it's a miss, complete misunderstanding. I simply reiterated my request, but there's no attempt at all. I'm in fact very interested in learning. Just to clarify, what I was hoping we would receive is a document that we could use in future for treating hemlocks on the water, so that other people could benefit from that. And that's, that's all. So there was no personal agenda of any kind, and I can say that for Christopher too, I'm sure. So nobody is against you or is doing anything wrong.
Mentioned that the Arnold Arboretum, they've been.
So I think.
Nineteen hundred hemlocks.
We have a lot of other people on this.
And they've been treating with.
Patiently waiting.
Horticultural oil.
So thank you so.
Being a mechanical.
Thank you so much.
And they brought in beetles and they're still all dying. So they've given up on that.
Thank you.
Well, I'm very happy that we have a good result. You guys are doing a wonder for that property. I think the community is very grateful for everything you're doing. And thank you, Dr. Smith, for the resolution and the specificity and I'm just happy that. We can all leave this as friends.
And the next step is the BOT. Is it would it be time to get into the next BOT agenda or would you have to go to the following one? So that's the next step.
How will I find that out?
I will communicate with the board tomorrow that this was approved and then notify you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
So the second applicant for today is Drew Singh, but I don't. Do I see that? Are you?
I don't see him just yet.
One on the phone?
My phone too. No, I don't see him yet. So just remove to the next applicant.
Can we approve this application without the applicant present since we've already discussed the cause? No, okay. So we are skipping. The second applicant because he's currently not present. And we're going to number three, the Tavani residence at fifty two Turtle Mountain Road.
Welcome. Hello. Been a long time since you were here.
It's been a long time.
Yeah. Your point for hardship variance, by way of background. We have two large picture windows in our house that faces up on hill, using that for the weight. About a year now, we've been having a leak. Seriously, when we get some rain. First, we discovered there was rotted wood. So we had a contractor come in, Joe Cerise come in. We do the whole thing in wood. It did not stop the leak. So then we went to a couple contractors to say we need to replace this portion. Do we have a picture of that?
Yeah, we've we've got it.
Maybe. There's two of these windows. What we're talking about is this piece right here, not the whole thing. So then we went to a couple contractors, come in, measure it, do the thing, could not find someone to make it. So they bailed on us. So then we called. Window manufacturers. One of them wanted to do the whole thing and it was going to look different, a couple inches here, a couple inches there. Obviously, we didn't do that. And then eventually we came to Marvin, who the gentleman from Marvin is here, and they came in with a couple of their project managers and they agreed. They could remake that exact window, make it look exact, match the one that's in the dining room. But they have they would do it in fiberglass, white fiberglass. Our windows are white. The trim's all white. So we're here asking for a hardship variance because we don't know where else to go to get this fixed. It's been going on now for a year. I have photographs that can show you when you get a pretty good rain, water literally just.
I have eighty two leaks in my house, so I know what that feels like.
And you go away and you hear there's rain back home, you get like a wreck, you know, I have to send neighbors in. But anyway. We're we hopefully we're down the stretch. We're here in front of you asking for this variance. So the Marvin company can make that exact window, put it in there. Yes.
Let's just ask what what do you what did they come up with as the cause for this leak? Do you know? Is it the actual, is it coming through gaps within the wood or is it the flashing or what did they say?
On the inside, it always seems to leak right in here and this portion. We have pictures of all that wood is all rotted on the inside now.
It's beyond now. It's.
But we don't know exactly what from in here because we had a lot of this replaced. Hoping that was going to solve the problem, but it didn't at quite an expense.
Flashed it. We've redone everything. It's just probably a faulty.
Sealed it. They can unsealed it on top of it. It's not done. So the only thing we've come up with is we have to replace the whole window.
So that's what would it? Could I open it for the bar member? Personally, I need. On this.
It's it's, yeah, it sucks. It's we would love that, you know, it could be replaced with wood, like with like, that's what we're striving for, as you know, so. It, you know, the, you know, it does seem to be a genuine hardship issue here. It's not just a.
Since it's been attempted already.
And it is visually like it's going to look exactly so. It's not changing the dimensions.
You can't you can't go up close either, so we can't.
Can't get anywhere.
So I I'm I'm veering towards agreeing. The 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 only thing I'd like to mention is just, you know, it's it's kind of related, but it's not it's not certainly not a condition. Is that you had painted your house, you toned down the the color. This this gray looks fantastic. It really is. Makes the house thing. It's such an improvement. And I was just wondering whether if you could take the next step of of instead of having white windows, that they were sort of like tuxedo green or something like that. Or a lighter or a darker gray or something.
About it. Put it on. It's not relevant to this.
Right, no, I was just I just wanted to to throw it because then 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 your house would look amazing because it does stick out and it sticks out as as, you know, very modern. Style and and that would just be a vast improvement. That's an aside. It's no condition.
Thank you for the compliment.
So I I'm I'm reluctant to agree to a fiberglass window, but because of the hardship issue.
Well, the hardship and it's an isolated spot and you've, you know, the rest of it all remains wood and I think it's it's, you know, to the extent there's any worry about a precedent, I think that's mitigated by the. The targeted nature of this application.
The targeted nature and the second attempt at mitigating with wood first and then it.
It's right.
So I so are we ready to proceed to a vote? So I would like to make a motion to vote that based on the unique circumstance. In the large and complex design of the window and the detailed technical explanation provided. That this window be approved as a like replacement of the existing arched section and in fiberglass.
Two windows, just one.
Just one. The other one's fine.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you guys very much. Thank you. Good luck with it and stay dry.
And thank you for all the specifics. It's just to everybody. The more details you bring in, the more we can be on the same page and understand and get to a resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night. Night, Mr. Marvin.
Okay. You're up next.
You've just been operating?
Yes.
Oh, my goodness.
No, not operate today.
Okay.
I'd be today in the clinic today.
But where's your backup? Did they leave the little guy?
She left. She left. She she really wanted to be here, but it was it was it was a little patchy by the time, so.
For the record, could you introduce yourself?
Yes, my name is Sam Spinwitz. I live at twenty four Akama Road.
Great.
So would you like to talk us through your plan?
Yeah, so my wife and I moved into the park in October of twenty twenty and. It was pretty short after that. We noticed we had a problem in our side yard. If you drive by, you'll see. Our our side yard on the right side is filled with. And and invasive bamboo. It wasn't as much of a problem, we thought initially, but then over the years and it spreads really fast and the roots. Take hold pretty deep, so it started to, you know, kind of invade our house. And every summer I I have to dig up some. And a bamboo root. So it's been really frustrating in that aspect. And then there is a deer fence on our property that expands through. Throughout the property, but in particular in the side yard, I took a picture of it when we moved in. It's really. I apologize for the black and white aspect to it, but but you can see it's broken down. There are sharp edges all over the plate. And so we kind of ignored it initially, but our kids like to play in the side yard. Our kids like to play in the side yard. And so on a few and and, you know, we've had a few really close calls where they, you know, poke their 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 elbow or, you know, they get injured. So so we thought it was we had an immediate concern to address the danger. Of the deer fence. So we removed a small a small portion of that deer fence. And then, you know, we, when we moved in, we had uncovered an old antique gate under our deck. We don't know. How long it was it was there for. But it was really old. It was the hinges were were off, basically. There were. There were parts of iron that were degraded, so it was but but it was beautiful. It was very heavy. It's very beautiful. So we we had imagined maybe it was original to the house. We weren't sure, but our plan was always to try to. Restore it. And I think I sent a picture to you guys in the past. It used to be, yeah, I think I sent a picture to you that. You know, the gate was in really, really poor condition and there's a lot of wrought iron in the park. We thought, you know, it would look beautiful in that area and we thought, okay, it could be original to the house. So we hired a professional iron smith who's had about like twenty to thirty years of experience. You know, he put new hinges on. We spent a lot of money trying to restore like old parts that were. Really broken down. And originally the columns were going to be two centim two centimeters, but because of the heaviness of the gate, he had to expand the columns. You know, we didn't realize that when you change material, it becomes a totally different ballgame. So that's where our our mistake came into play, total misunderstanding. And so. So the gate, along with the hedge line, is present at the house. You know, we've had a lot of people. Say it looks really nice. But. So that was a portion of our project and then we wanted to remove the invasive. Agitation in that area just because it was getting crowed trying to the house and, you know. Maybe tear plumbing or, you know, whatever. So so we had a few people come out and, you know, they it 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 is possible. And so the plan was to remove all all that bamboo. They were they were, you know, you noticed at the property, there were very small. Hemlock trees in the bamboo. There's about three of them, but the in but the trunk. You know, the trunk diameter of those hemlock trees are maybe three inches. The height of those trees, about eight to ten feet, they're very small. And to be honest with you, you know, not very healthy looking because the bamboo has destroyed them. It it takes up the water. It takes up the sunlight, so they don't look healthy. So those so yes, those three hemlock trees would would be added in the in the removal. And then we were.
Count as they tree removal because they're too small.
I wanted to be open and honest with everything.
But they're not they're not in our jurisdiction there, but like this.
And then if we want, if we were to spend all the money removing all this bamboo, it's it's not cheap because it requires a lot of digging, at least three to four feet deep digging. And then we wanted to make it a a nice area. So we have bluestone throughout the property. We have bluestone planter boxes. We have. We have a bluestone. I guess. Bluestone path up up to the main entrance. So we were going to use, you know, the same bluestones to make a nice patio space. The other additions to, you know, to the courtyard, we were going to hang planter boxes in the courtyard to make it look really nice and plant a lot of. Native plants and in that aspect, I was actually going to ask you guys if you had any ideas on groupings we could add in the courtyard. And then for the hangers, if you notice in.
There was eight, right? And they're on the they're on the inside.
Right, elevated hangers. And if you notice on the next page, the hang the. You know, the design of the hang of the of the elevated hangers is in line with the shingles on the house. I'm sorry, not shingles, but I don't. The trim, yeah, the trim one. So there's a couple of ideas in the project that make it continuous with aspects up of the house. I was on a walk over the weekend because it was beautiful and I noticed that. You know, there's a lot of green. Abarvitae trees. I'm sorry if I mispronounced that, but I have a couple of pictures. It's it's a beautiful hedge line in the park. I mean, and it's very. Widespread and used pretty often. These are just three examples that I noticed in the park. That I wanted to share with you guys.
Ask you one thing.
Yeah.
Planning, is it, are you currently planning on reducing the height of the door?
So that.
Is that part of the application?
So, you know, I I was, it's an option, you know, I'll be honest with you, it's an option. It's an antique door and it might be. It might be a piece that came with the house a long time ago. I really don't know. So in an ideal world, I don't want to take down the height of the door. I can paint it to make it more congruous with the the greenery in the area. I'd be open to that.
Could I maybe jump in?
Yeah.
So 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 much of what you're doing here, Dr. Smith, is is great. I think the arborvitae is is a great choice. It's going to give you much more. Thick sort of privacy. It's going to give the neighbors privacy, which clearly is an issue for them as well and obviously vastly preferable to the invasive bamboo. The, you know, the wrought iron, I think I think we can all agree. Probably was not part of the house. I mean, it doesn't bear any relationship.
I have no idea.
But 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 that said, you you and this is me speaking. I'm one member of five. My feeling is you have you've put it in. I think it would be great to soften. Seriously soften its impact, which I myself regard as not in keeping with the architecture and and probably. Potentially objectionable even to your neighbors. And it is something that should have come to us before you even.
I agree.
But so so. So I'm just looking at at this page. I don't know what page it is, but. This overview, this bird's eye view of of the patio, et cetera, and taking into account where you are. Taking into account your neighbors' concerns, because as you may be aware, your neighbors were quite worried about the particulate and and so on and so forth with the fire. So if I. Here's what I would advise and others here may feel very, very differently. I would do exactly as you're doing with the arborvitae. I would add three more right in front of the gate. So you basically create a side opening. So from the street, that gate is not visible. It basically is almost like a suggestion of a maze. You go behind it and then you can go through the gate. That will give you more privacy when you're on the patio from it, but it would also.
It would hide beauty at the gate. I mean.
I think I think the beauty is is subjective and many people probably don't find it beautiful.
I know a lot of people that do find it.
Fine. I I think it was probably.
Other opinion now. Now we're about a difference of opinion and and.
The gate that I think wouldn't have passed. The board had you had you come at the very outset. So right now we're trying to.
But is there a reason why it wouldn't pass board? I'm just curious. What what is the legal? Well, what is the legal?
Partly for height.
Let me just point out.
Question one second. What is there a legal height requirement?
Yes, six feet and and that's what.
But why, you know, I I was taking a walk in the park and I did find a gate that exists that 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 was a house that was newly renovated. So there's precedent. There's precedent.
So that that gate, which is like yours, a piece of architectural salvage that had nothing to do with that house, clearly. Was added decades ago and not on our watch, certainly.
But there's precedent. That's that's all I'm saying.
Bad precedent. We wouldn't.
It's a bad precedent. It wouldn't have passed. That kind of willy nilly architectural salvage installation is not something that we would recommend. Setting that aside, it was all done out of turn. So right now we're in a kind of damage control and we're trying to come up. I am trying to come up with a an acceptable, palatable. Solution to you. Okay, that's what I'm trying to do. What I am suggesting is that you do everything you're talking about with these arborvitae. You add three here to mitigate. Boom, boom, boom. You walk in, but nobody else is subjected to the gate. But you have it and you don't have to feel that you've lost money, having it. Fixed.
Suggesting that I hide a beautiful gate that might be might be hit.
Well, it's I mean, the point is it's it's. I don't find it beautiful. I find.
And I'm and I am and I am offering options to try to. To try to compromise. You're asking me to hide a gate.
Can I finish what I was trying to say?
I I I didn't know. I was into. I I I didn't know, I was interrupting you, I'm sorry.
You were.
Okay.
I would do exactly what you're doing with the arborvitae, I would add three more in front. I would take your fire um feature, which is uh well within the setback, I would think to be problematic.
Well, that's a that's a other discussion.
Is that problematic or not?
Yeah, well, it it is a structure, you know, given the size and the material, um and it would have to be set back. Um and I'm sorry, it's a large number, but it's a. A structure would need to be set back fifty feet off the property line. And I know in this case, it's not even practical, I know. But because of its construction, being masonry and the size and such, it is a structure. So it would have to be fifty feet back, um unless you get a variance from the.
And I was planning to do that.
We discussed that briefly.
You know, what I'm trying to convey, Dr. Spencer, is that you have neighbors who have already uh uphired that it is objectionable to them. So you're gonna have a very rough time getting a variance for that with that on the record. So again, I'm trying to help you here with some suggestions.
Listening to your suggestions.
What I would do is take that away and put a water feature instead of a fire feature, something if you want a focal point. Something that will mitigate close village livings that will actually solve more problems than it creates with your neighbors. Just a suggestion.
Think we're into that.
I I I agree, I think to to. I if if the regulation is six foot, then needs to be cut down unless you get a variance to uh have it higher. If it is, if it is um if it is partially hidden by these by Rob's suggestion, then I wouldn't mind it. That if you got the variance and it was a little bit higher and that you enjoy it and your friends enjoy it when they come in and it's a discovery, it's a reveal. And um. Um so I I and.
To me, that landscaping plan looks uh strange. Honestly, I'm being honest with you.
Remove the gate.
I I mean, I I would like to.
So.
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, okay, um so. It's it seems that it's a it's an interesting and creative idea, but I think the applicant is. Is not into that, so let's let's perhaps work on on other mitigating possibilities. This, it's it is stylistically not in line with the home, but. I think people feel that if it's, if it is reduced in height and it and the color is matched to a, you know. More of a color that blends in with the house.
Were you thinking of a gray or what were?
A green that matched the windows.
Shutters, right, yeah.
To make it, yeah.
So you have green shutter.
We have green shutter, yeah.
Lower and you know, you've got the arborvitae that that are very close by it that were almost gonna sort of grow over it and into it.
If you look at that.
Well, that would be a huge mitigation.
That I'd be happy with that.
My my feelings exactly, I just think that it in order to calm it, um for the sake of anyone who needs it to be calmed. To just pick a much a a deeper darker color that'll just blend.
Okay. Yeah, I agree with that, I'm okay with that.
And what and the reduction in the height, is that easy to do or is? Pretty involved.
It's involved, um you know, what what if, I mean, what if we just, what if we just change the color, I feel, I feel like that would. Um mitigate it quite a bit.
The board can only approve something that's in compliance with the code and that's six feet maximum. You'd have to go to the B Z A to get a variance for something higher than six feet in the side yard. So you have an option to get a variance.
Okay.
And also with that, possibly a change in the color if you wish.
Okay. Yeah, I I would agree with the change in the color, I'd have to talk with my wife about the height restriction, it would be cutting down an antique gate. It changes the whole aspect of of the gate when you cut it down, it becomes not authentic anymore, so so you have to understand that, so you know.
Need to to help, made a suggestion to help would be, paint it now to see if it like, oh.
Christopher has come up with a fabulous idea, I like that.
Then, yeah.
I'm okay with all of that.
Great.
So I obviously wanna compromise, so if it's still not satisfying needs, uh you know.
And as far as the the yeah, the fire thing is, cause I I'm very against, especially nowadays, having a fire uh element in any garden.
Yeah, I understand that now is a bad time to bring up a project like that, I get it, I get it, I get it, I mean, it's a very severe drought. But there are fire pits all over the place, there are grills and fire, so it's, to me, you have to look at it how I'm perceiving it. You're telling me I can't do something that has been done many times in the park, there's a house going up on Tower Hill with two fire pits. On on their property, there are. You know, fireplaces that I've seen before, so it's just very frustrating when some, you know, when when it's. You know, obviously in a very severe drought, I wouldn't use it, it would it would make no sense to use it, that's just. Pure common sense, but if we're, if I'm putting a lot of money into this project, getting rid of invasive species that nobody wants, right? Nobody wants that, it will grow into their property, into my neighbor's property, I'm doing, I'm doing them a favor. In reality, in that aspect, I'm taking out invasive species that will destroy every tree in the area. It will grow and and just drain up the water supply, I I mean, you saw these small hemlocks, they look terrible. Already, so I'm trying to save the bigger hemlocks that are maybe thirty, forty feet high, you know, but but. So it's very frustrating to be told that I can't put any any kind of a fire entity.
Well, it's so close to the neighbor's age, I mean, if you had a larger property.
So I asked John, I asked John, what is code, what is the code, tell me law, and John said there is no village code. So then I looked.
Well, there's there's nothing, there's nothing overall prohibiting fire pits or fireplaces, um but it is large enough to be considered a structure. And structures would have to be fifty feet off.
Can you define a structure for me, what what is a structure?
Um, structure is defined in the village code, I could send it to you.
But but can you just kind of summarize it? Having a conversation about it. Um what is a structure?
I'd rather not summarize it, it is defined and I'll send it to you from the village code. It it typically is, you know, a different building materials assembled in such a way that forms some type of, you know, structure.
Well, we we talked about it, it that. I know the setbacks in it on my property, it would basically prohibit me from doing anything to the property. Right, so it.
If it's a certain size and built in a certain way, so.
I would be open if you have ideas, it's like, if you have ideas, I would be open to hearing those ideas. You you know, but um.
Well, and it may not be palatable to you, but I was thinking, you know, water feature could be useful because, you know, it would be a very easy sell. You know, it may still require a variance because it's a built structure, but again, that if it's it's sort of.
I don't. I mean, I of what kind of a water feature were you thinking about?
You know, a small fountain or something. But you know, the the thing is, is that any of these boards must take into account if a if a neighbor. You know, registers a serious complaint and we're trying to balance so many interests, so that.
Listen, I I understand, I I will say that that neighbor complained a few years ago about um. Uh we had our irrigation system on and they complained that the water was running off into their driveway, which we are on a sloped street. So sometimes, you know, complaints are justifiable, you know, um. You know, uh I I was very upset about that complaint two years ago, John emailed me, I couldn't even believe that complaint. You know, there's, let's just say my relationship with my neighbors is not a great one, so there is a lot of bias with that, okay? So just, no, but just understand that, there's a lot of snooping that goes around, a lot of walking up and down the street.
Which is frustrating.
Which is very frustrating.
And and I I think all of our goals, both individually and collectively, and certainly on these boards that for better or worse are entrusted with trying to safeguard. You know, the integrity of the park, but also the function of it, neighbor by neighbor. Is is, you know, whether the neighbor is right or wrong, it's just to try to diminish the amount of friction however we can.
I understand, but sometimes it's beyond our control, to be honest with you.
Back back to your your question about this being a structure. Let it, let it, let that simplify what you choose to do, because as long as you do something within the confines of what's necessary, you may find that there's an easy path to that.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, and again, any way we can help you do that, but if if John can send you the code. Cause I don't know the code called on on what this is, and then and if you wanna do that type of a feature, just do something that's. Within the landing pad of what's allowed, and I'm certain.
Right, well, I did look at New York's N N N New York State Fire Code and there is a clearance distance. Uh for any fire pit or any fireplace, and that's within ten feet of any combustible item. So I feel like we can definitely clear that code, you know, um you know, I. You know, in the letter, they mentioned uh air quality, how can you prove that a fire pit is interfering with a neighbor's air quality? They mentioned a significant fire hazard in a heavily wooded area, there are fire pits all over the place, so. You know, some of these things are unrealistic, to be honest with you, you know, you can't prove that air quality is impacted. You how how can you prove something like that?
Do you have any other comments from the audience or on Zoom?
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanna mention, uh my name is Ivan Techovitch and I. I'm a resident of eighteen Akoma Road.
Yeah, come up so we can hear you and was it, does that speak a word in the back?
It does, you'll be fine. Yeah, thank you. So I just wanna say that, you know, having that fireplace between those two houses in such a close proximity. It's a definitely recipe for disaster and and I also wanna say. Uh I'm kind of shocked because this is they reviewing uh your proposal to change the property and just demonizing. Your neighbor in front of the uh architectural board, it's very low. And and as you remember, when you moved to the neighborhood.
We've we've never complained about you in any way, you you voiced multiple complaints to John, so it's fair game. Fair game, I'm sorry, it's fair. You know, you've done a structure on your driveway, you put eagles on it, we hate it, you know, but but we've never complained.
Well, I I went before the architectural board and that was approved.
Right, and you allowed it, we didn't like it, but but we, but it's what you wanted, so we acquiesced to that, sometimes it's it's. So we we played well, it's you who has not.
Well, let's let's um any other constructive criticism?
No, I I definitely, you know, we have a clinical research that proves how um uh burning the woods can uh damage the the neighborhood. Uh I mean, I bring the significant impact.
So you're saying all fire pits, all fire pits in the park should not be allowed, is that what you're saying?
Well, I, not all all fire pits in the neighborhood.
Just my fire pit.
I'm going to uh join my husband in here.
So in such a close proximity between those two houses, I again, it's a recipe for disaster because.
This is New York State code, this is New York State code.
Well, we have your your comments on the record.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate, I don't wanna take much of your time, I really appreciate everything.
And I don't wanna take much of your time either, so I I kinda wanna.
Thinking what we can, how we can move move forward.
Like we do, just for the record, the for, you know, my personal opinion um on on fire pits, I am just, I would. Be against any uh fire pit in the park, we live in a forest and so it's just.
But the the point is that, I I understand, I understand, and I respect your opinion, but the point is that people have it and and they have been. It's been approved, so.
Well, no, there's a, there's, there's, there's a lot of things in the park where there were boards and things and things slipped through and. It's 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 it's, so we're always looking forward and 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 things change, things evolve, it's like, so uh. But that's 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 just my personal opinion, so it's uh. The, sorry, the.
I would be, I would be okay to follow New York State code and uh uh you know, ten feet away from any. And I could share this with you, if ten feet away, if it's in the middle of the courtyard, that's fine when the.
I don't think it's our, it's our, it's the the zoning um board that we decide and that is not our our purview. The and the other, I think the other thing that you you're proposing would also have to go to get a variance. Is the hanging baskets, they're they're above seven.
Yeah. I would be okay with that.
Would conform.
Six feet in the side.
Just just so that.
Yeah, in an ideal world, if we can paint it and see how it looks and without cutting something antique down, that would be ideal, you know.
And just just my um input on on that, that um if it was outside the the. Arboretum, arbivita um facing the street, I would be happy with it, I I I think, because we're in a. Wooded community, you know, it's, we're not in a, you know, and and it's an urban s- s- place where you have hanging baskets. And and planters and hanging things, cause there's no uh no land, here we have the land, so I'd encourage that to be used. So but you know, it's your your choice, if you want to have them behind, hidden behind there, that's fine, but I I wouldn't.
I think right right now, there's there's a situated uh just very much along the gate, so it it almost, almost. You know, in a couple of years, the 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 hedge is going to make the gate seem insignificant, I'm telling you, I've seen it around. It's going to blend in and then if it's green, it it will, you won't be able to see it.
It will soften it, absolutely.
Yeah, it will blend, I promise you, you have to think three, four years in advance.
Again, I'm not going to suggest any design decisions here, because I think that that's outside of um what you're looking for, but. Quick question, would it in any way make it more recessive for the gate, because the gate is already installed? If these came forward a little bit so that it made the gate feel slightly more recessed and it's painted, I mean. Would that in any way help or would that just come out of line with what you wanted?
I think these trees grow very fast and they're very robust. Uh and they grow in width and height, so you know, I mean, um I think, I really think it's going to blend in significantly. Very fast.
Do you have a fire pit on the opposite side or? Isn't there?
Oh, sorry, it's a portable, um.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's like, um, yeah.
Right, but you wouldn't have a portable solution on that other side whenever you want, is it for pizza?
Uh no, no, just for.
General cooking.
Yeah, yeah, just for recreation, it would be used maybe once a month at the most, so this. This idea of air pollution and it just, it it's not like I'm gonna be sitting out there every day using another fire pit.
But a seasonal object that you could bring out, would that not? Be acceptable?
I think, I don't think it'd be as in, it's it's not gonna be professional looking, let's just put it that way, you know.
And the last point is the actual terracing, that needs to have a variance as well, because you already have a large patio, is that correct?
Yes, we discussed some general numbers regarding that and he would need a variance for the added area that he's proposing, yes.
So how how should we leave it now?
Can't do anything, has to go to the to the variance, so before we can go to.
But would we say that that the gate should be painted so that we can?
But I think, yeah, maybe, yeah, yeah, and then we can get a clear idea, like, oh, that's a no brainer, yeah, that disappears.
Would you be okay with that?
Sure, sure, absolutely.
Do we need a resolution for that or not?
No, I don't think so.
So you don't go backwards?
You were saying, Sam, to match the.
Match the green color, I will I will pay match them, so it's that.
Which is a nice dark, dark green.
Yes, exactly, very dark.
Once it, we get to get the variance, then he comes back and then we vote on it.
Okay.
The likelihood is that.
Sounds good, thank you for your understanding, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
We call um the fifth applicant for today, please.
Welcome, please introduce yourselves for the record.
Sure, Jeremy Kida from one seventeen East Lake Road and Alex Adamo from Luxury Aquatics.
What?
Luxury Aquatics.
Nice, so do you want to just talk us through your plan?
Uh it should be pretty simple, we're just planning to install a ten by ten ingress. In an area that's already sort of hidden from other neighbors and.
You're certainly inclined to see this.
Yeah.
Not at all.
Nope, it's gonna feature an automatic cover system on it, so there would be a push button switch that's hidden in a bush somewhere, that in high height, has a lock and a switch on it. Simply required to be operated from line of sight, so that's how that works, uh there's a small four foot by eight foot concrete equipment pad. That's noted on the plan, that's where we're gonna sit our pump, our filter, and we're gonna have an electric heat unit on this pool, uh that's gonna provide. Right there, so so small, proposed, so it's a ten by ten spa and then proposed four by eight equipment pad, E Q pad. Um there will be a trench dug about thirty six inches in depth from the ten by ten spa over to the equipment pad. That'd be approximately four to six pipes inside of that trench uh for suction and for return. There will be a electrical conduit installed from the house's primary panel. Out to that pad, everything's underground and hidden, um there is already all, as I think I gave you guys some pictures. But this is all completely um planted already with very mature trees, so none of this. But this is all completely, um, planted already with very mature trees. So none of this stuff is visible from, this is a mountain that's up in here and then.
And the, the trees are not going to be affected, you think?
Anything, I think he might, his might add, yeah, might add something to kind of thicken the privacy.
Evergreens because in the winter sometimes they're.
What about lighting?
There's going to be one light inside of the pool. That's color changing. That's controllable with a smartphone.
Disco ball?
Disco ball. They can do all kinds of stuff. It's very, very, um, it's a really cool light, but it's not a very powerful light. Um, certainly you'll see it from the second story of the home.
Is that something you want?
We'll see it.
A disco. It's very tuxedo. That's what I'm saying.
There's either white or, or, or party. You can do, you can kind of do whatever you want.
And they can be fixed.
But mostly it's going to be closed unless you're actually using it. It's closed. It's not like it's shiny.
I don't think, uh.
And none of the neighbors would see it, right?
No.
No.
They could.
Okay.
So you enter here, you enter here, not from here. Is that right or?
So there's a gate coming into the backyard. This is all grass all here. This delineation here is just the silt fence that the engineer put out.
Okay, I see. Right. So it's not fenced.
Uh, the yard is already fenced.
The whole yard.
Yeah, there's a deer fence.
Yeah, he's got a deer fence. The, the sizing of the spacing of the hole technically does meet the two by two code.
There's a fair amount of planting.
Yeah, we, we, we might have to adjust. The code does call for an automatic closing gate. So, um, upon the final inspection, we can make sure that the, the gates close. So if you just.
Right.
Other than that, I think, uh, like I said, it's going to have an automatic safety cover on it, which will keep it safe all year round. Um, so forty inches in depth.
Yenikov was the previous owner, but they had recently got the survey. So.
Ah, so we can change that, right?
We had asked, I had, uh, attempted to save Mr. Kidd some dollars in this. I had gone to the original surveyor and asked him to send that to me. And when I had sent that document from, I forget the, the surveyor's name, uh, to Mr. Gdansky here, who's my engineer, uh, because, because the survey was stamped by a PLS, he's able to use that data. But he didn't change the name when he put it on his plan. I caught it before I submitted it. I didn't think it would be a big deal.
Very efficient.
I actually tried to edit it, uh, and the document was locked, so I wasn't able to do that.
It's better that you don't edit it.
Oh, I read that. It says down in there. I'm not supposed to be editing it anyways.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, the only thing I think, as you know, I rushed to get you on this agenda, but I did not have time to notify the neighbors, which is a requirement. So I asked if the bar is, um, leaning towards approving the project. Um, approve it, but maybe with fifteen days leniency and I'll notify the neighbors tomorrow. One of them.
The closest neighbor already knows about it. Well, there is some.
That helps. Um, but I wasn't sure if that neighbor had changed. If there's a new owner.
Not, well, not quite yet.
Yeah, but give us two weeks to accept any comments from the neighbors.
Our thought process on like, on construction, uh, gunite cannot be shot when it's freezing cold. So if we're going to excavate the structure, we'll put a silt fence, safety fence around it. If we get a nice warm spell, three, four days in a row, we can get our gunite shot. Great. Um, then I'll, I'll start the three year process. I can't plaster it until the gunite's cured for thirty days. Um, so whether we're fortunate enough to have a slower weather where I can get this whole thing done for them and they can be swimming in February, March, great. Uh, if not the latest, uh, once the, once the weather breaks, early spring.
And we're not extending any patio.
No additional previous coverage at all.
I think I saw conflicting pictures. Is the coping for the spa roughly even with grave or is it elevated?
We were discussing about elevating the structure. Uh, we decided to bring it down to ground level. You'll have a fourteen inch wide standard, two inch thick bluestone coping around all four sides, ten by ten. Um.
That's on the plan too.
Yes. Yeah.
Probably put some like stepping stones.
Any?
No, sounds great.
Are there any more comments, questions?
Do you all have any comments in the audience?
No.
On Zoom?
Hope for many more just like this.
So, um, I would now like to make a motion to approve the design for the in-ground hot tub. As seen on. Professor's going to read out what, what the drawing, uh, date is.
Hey, the date is the fifth of November, two thousand twenty-four on page.
Also, that's, that's.
Page one.
And was, was the materials as specified and, um?
And no extra lighting apart from the lighting there in.
Yeah, I mean, we are, there was garden lighting there that's just working for some. Takes a minute now. Low voltage garden.
It's, yeah, it's important, it's important to keep low voltage, not like the neighbors that have.
Yeah, yeah, no.
And it doesn't shoot straight up.
The other just.
Okay, yeah.
Facing down.
That's the main.
Mushroom cap.
Yeah, great.
So, um, do I have a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
But that's conditional on the.
Yeah, it's two weeks just to notify the neighbors. If I have any concerns, all of you.
Thank you. You too. Thank you.
We got it on to changing a garage door.
Last but not least. Hello.
Hello.
Please identify yourselves for the record.
Jason Swirble, one sixty Continental Road. Uh, so.
Spit it out.
Requesting permission to, uh, we need to replace a rotten door, which I assume, um, you may have seen in the photos.
Right.
Um, so we would like to, need to replace it with another wooden door.
The door ran away.
Where are we? Sorry.
Have you seen it?
Email, but not, okay, but thanks. Okay.
There you are.
Yeah. So, um, so we just have this enormous, really ugly door, um, that takes up all of the garage space. We don't use the garage for cars and, um, the door that we have for ingress, egress is very narrow, leads into a narrow hall that, um, that the previous owners dropped in there, uh, into the garage space, hence, you know, very wasted space in there. So we'd like to give smaller door because that's less to rot. Uh, we'd like to replace the entry door and center it so we can put lights on either side of the door. It's very, very dark in that area with only the one light on the end of the garage. Um, and then I can put some, uh, sanders and so on from the whole facade there. Um, and so.
What an enhancement.
Yes, yeah, I believe.
From which doors were you thinking of?
Who's it?
Find other ways of keeping them happy.
Yes. Can you just show us which one is your preferred door?
So I prefer the door that, um, is, I, I researched initially, had a hard time finding wood doors at all. Um, but the companies I came up with, um, Raynor, um, was the one that found the closest replacement and that is, um, the door that resembles ours. Um, this one, uh, yeah, the E forty-four. Um, and so once they sent that to me, I researched, um, garage doors. What is the company's name? And so this is their Ca- their Colonial, their Cambridge Colonial model. And so when I was looking through these, I thought, well, I know I'm supposed to replace in kind, but I'd rather do something that's a little prettier. Thank you. It is, um, about two and a half times the cost, but I'd really rather put that there.
Yeah, we love this.
Great.
You good girl.
But what, which one is the entrance door that matches the goals?
So then that's in there as well, just to, um, rather than, I think right now we have nine light, six light. Um, and it'll be instead of thirty-two, thirty-six. Um, there were two doors that I like. And so what, you know, if there's one that you, I prefer the, yeah.
Looks great.
And that, and the mockup, we put that one in there.
With that matches.
The six.
That's nine.
Nine, yeah.
So that was initially was replacing in kind. So, um, so I can do the mockup. If need be, or we can change it, but, um, I, and I forgot to date my.
Denied.
And where's that, where's your parian buffer? I don't see it.
It's on either side of the door.
Ours is thirty-two.
Can we go back to, to, to this? Yeah. Right.
No trees will be removed.
And the only thing, you know, I think it's going to be such an enhancement. It would be great to see the, um, the munting here sort of be as close and as sympathetic as possible to the munting here. So I don't know exactly which of those is going to coexist. Which is going to play most nicely with bees. Um, you know what I mean? In other words, would you even have more munting than is suggested that it's made? Cause this is, I don't know. Do you know what I'm saying?
He's a, he's a munting guy.
Isn't it too narrow?
The missing link.
I think he, I think he likes, he likes this closeness and he thinks, he, he does have fabulous taste.
Right. So he's. So then to have, okay.
That's a super good idea, but I don't know whether you could find that.
If there's a way to, if there's room to, um, yeah, but honestly, even if not, it's great.
So, so these are, uh, these doors come in, um, uh, this was the sixteen light. They came in twelve light. So if I did less lights on the garage doors and then to match, um.
No, I think the garage doors are perfect.
I would use your garage door as the standard and then try to bring the other door as close as you can, within reason. I mean, your choices will be as your choices are and it's going to be a great improvement. But to the extent that it's as easy and cheap, one way or the other.
So this is the other door that I was more, this matches the door that we have. And that has the extra lights, which is why I drew this one. That was initially what we were going with, but then when I was doing what I liked as opposed to matching.
Compatible with the garage.
Doesn't that feel a little bit more?
I prefer this one, but it's, yeah. I think it's, yeah, it's not matchy-matchy, but it's, or, uh, I think your stout is a little bit.
Agreed, agreed.
And the, the color is going to be the same as the garage doors?
So right now the door, uh, is, uh, hail navy. Um, it looks very gray and dirty. Um, the door is a beige.
Cause what is your front door? Do you have, do you have a front?
Bright red.
You wouldn't just want to do them both bright red or no?
I'd be happy to.
Wouldn't that be nice to keep a kind of a, a program?
I would. I don't want to change the front door. So yeah, I'd rather have it, I'd rather have it dark stained.
I think you're, that's what I was remembering.
Have it blind in.
I'm not sure. What do you, what do you prefer? I'd prefer a dark stained wood or a red, a dark stained wood.
Yeah, I don't. Two red door, do, do, do dark.
Then do dark.
Yeah, I think Elizabeth Arden would be furious if you had a.
Right, right, right.
She would feel one red door is enough. Sassafrina.
So I think the stained wood, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, fantastic.
Right. Great enhancement.
So, um, and three light, four lights.
Three.
Three lights.
So there's one existing, but I'll replace it so they'll match.
These are sconces. They go right on the, uh.
On those dead points. If you look, if you.
You know, it's nice as they sort of echo the roof line. That roof line has that sort of very sudden, yeah.
What are the, do you know, do we have the lumens here?
I don't think so. What, there's a water.
The next page. It was on two pages on.
The Kelvin.
Kelvin.
So three thousand Kelvin or less is.
Two, oh, hello.
I think it says three to five watts. So I think, or candescence.
Does that address?
They're incandescent bulbs.
Oh, so you don't need Kelvin.
Sixty watts, sorry.
Yeah.
Kelvin.
Sixty watts. That's fine.
Seven hundred, three thousand, anything beyond that.
Yeah, that's a lot. Right.
Oh, if there's, yeah, if there are three bulbs, each sixty watt, that may be like lights, camera action. So, um.
Well, I have, I definitely.
I'll pull out the requirements. I don't know them all. I think sixty is a little. Maybe three at forty is a lot.
Okay. We are coming from like pitch black there, but I'm also coming from neighbors who have lights. So I really, yeah, I'm, I'm opposed to having anything too bright. Um, those, um, styles come in two light and one light. So I'm happy to have if three lights is the max, have each one have one light. Yeah. Dimmer would be great, but dimmers tend to be moved up by people sometimes. So, and left on all night sometimes.
Do you have a?
I'm the guilty one.
So you can put a governor on his throttle.
No, no, I'm talking about neighbors. So.
Okay. So are we ready to, to vote? Would you be kind enough to formulate this?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to approve the replacing of the garage door, the double garage door with a single garage wooden door. Um, uh, the, what's the make? Tricoy? No.
Is it the model E forty-four?
That's the one, no, that, that, that was the match was E forty-four. That's the, um, Cambridge.
Cambridge, the. The Cambridge.
Yes, uh, sixteen light, two panel.
There you go.
Sixteen light, two panel garage door and a.
Not.
No, that's one. One on the back.
Uh, no, one more maybe. There we go.
And a lark ret. Uh, that's the lighting.
That was.
There were two pictures.
Nine lights.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we don't, we don't have the specs.
Idifications on the previous page, maybe.
That's the spec for the, uh, oh, crosswood doors. Thirty-six by eighty inch Craftsman nine life, clear beveled glass, knotty alder, unfinished wood door. And three ret, lark ret lights that have, you're saying one bulb in each or two?
Uh, we'll find out the specs.
You know what the maximum lumens is and then you can.
Cause I'll do the max.
Whether it's, whether it's one or three, it's, it's whatever the total lumens is.
So to respect the total movement in, in matte black LED outdoor wall light item number five, seven, five, one, four, two, zero.
And the finish.
And the finish will be
plain wood.
Plain wood as well the.
Which is provincial, I think, is the stain on that, that color.
And that'll be matching the garage door.
If it comes stainable. Yes.
If not, do you want to paint both or paint?
If not, I'd rather keep the stain on the door and then keep the garage the same color as it is right now, which matches the house.
Everything else. Yeah.
And the siding to be made up to match existing.
Exactly. It's the rest of the house.
And that is for, did I mention Jill and Jason Swirble at one eighty Continental Road? Sixty. Did I say one eighty? It's one sixty Continental Road dated November the eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Bingo.
Awesome. Thank you.
Say goodbye to your mice.
Awesome. I, I love to copy here. Somebody have a, here. Nice. That's not all. Snakes.
Oh, really? Just nice little garter snakes or rat snakes?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Hello. Sorry to be late.
No problem. You missed all the.
I'm so sorry about what happened. I.
Oh, thank you for saying that.
How are you coping?
We're okay. So, uh, today's actually Liz's duty. So we're.
Where are you living? Did you find a place?
Uh, we're at the O'Neal's house.
Ah, great.
Isn't that nice?
It's lovely. The location's wonderful.
Wow. So you're going to go from here to the hospital or?
That's, well, I mean, inductions next Sunday. We're just waiting right now.
I see.
Ah, okay.
When is this?
I guess you wait until.
It's like exactly when, when Nate, when nature, I mean, baby will decide when baby comes. We're, we're just hanging out.
Exciting.
Is that like an induction oven?
It's very funny. Um, so I'm here, we, we, we discussed two matters last time. Uh, today I actually just wanted to share.
Just for the record, can you just mention your name and address?
Sorry, uh, Drew Singh, uh, thirty-seven Fox Hill. Um, and, uh, today's topic is regarding, uh, paint colors. Um, I'd shared, uh, with John, I have on my phone for you guys to look at, uh, directly, uh, some of the, uh, renderings which he'd requested last time from two angles. The first is from the front of the house as well as from the road. Um, you know, I spoke with, I mentioned my, uh, we had, uh, Lenore, uh, Winters, who joined the fall last time, as well as my, um, mother-in-law, who's a historical observationist. And both of them agreed that they, they, they suggested I come and speak with each of you, uh, speak with all of you, um, to share these images and renderings, um, with the request that if the board would be comfortable, uh, to approve them. Uh, to approve them for us, because we didn't even want to paint the samples until you guys had. Given us the thumbs up on it, just because it could be an eyesore and then don't wanna cover up something until it's approved. And the process that they'd suggested was that it's just so hard to tell from renderings which one's actually going to look the best. But to get, you know, your, your approval for us to paint a fairly large swath of all three of them. And then also to invite you, just if you would like to come see it afterwards, you're more than welcome to, but at least it's this meeting to say, listen, we just want to paint. So we can actually get the best look. Um, and then if you guys are comfortable with all three, then we can approve it today. If you're not comfortable with all three, we can paint all three and then you can come look for yourselves and we can have a discussion.
Can I just jump in for a second? I mean, uh, and it's totally understood and we have one professional here who, who has probably the most meaningful opinion on this. It's so clear that, you know, paint, it, what looks good in an image is not, so. The reason I as one member of five wouldn't like to just sort of vote yes across the board is that. What I'm able to see here, and it may not be representative, there seems to be a clear answer to my eye. But on the understanding that it could be off, I would just like to reserve, to me, the spice gold is the only one of the three. Here that agrees with the masonry of the house. But I would love to see all three in situ, just to confirm that, but.
Let me back up from that.
No, sure.
Um, I was uh in the park um when it was painted before it was painted black. And I have a picture here of what it looks like painted. Whatever color it is, because it's not old brick with, with mortise and, and, and weathered. It sticks out like a sore thumb. It's a brand whole new color fielder that sticks right out. So if you see there, uh, you see that's what sticks out. You don't see the house, you just see the extension painted. Because it's nice, fresh, clean paint and it's not many windows, so it really sticks out. I love the fact that it's, that someone was very smart and painted it black. And it doesn't disappear, but it disappears much more. And it's not drawing attention to itself because it's, your main house is the ug- is the pretty part, this is the, the ugly duckling. And so by painting, having it nice and freshly painted, your eye is drawn to that and not to the, your beautiful house. So I would, I would strongly recommend keeping it as is and not drawing attention to it. That's the, that's, that's my input.
Yeah. I think on this one, our, we spoke with our team is Lenore. Uh, Randy, who was also on the call last time and, and obviously ourselves, I think we just unanimously would like to paint it. Um, Elizabeth, and, and, and very much uh with this process, I think the reason why we're taking such pains and trying to. Do, do samples as well as it, it's, it's, as you said, rightfully, it's hard to tell until you actually do it. And we're really trying to do what's both best for the house and best for the, the, the overall aesthetic.
Um, would you paint the sills? I mean, there's mock-up here, would the, the sills be the same or would these be black just? Or, you know, they would, to give it a little bit more architectural element because the windows are so much smaller than here.
I think we'd be perfectly.
I, 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 I. Get experimental.
Yeah, I think that'd be something we'd be perfectly comfortable experimenting with, yeah.
Right, yeah, to make it.
What's on the main house? Is it, um? Oh, I see. I, but you're saying, right, because you don't have the benefit of the texture.
To make the windows a little, because they're, you know, a little bit, it's like that, there's a building on seven, Route seventeen, it was burned down and they've just redone it. It's an old building, they put tiny windows in, it looks.
I mean, and the other thing before we turn it over to our friends here is, is, you know, there is also, were it to be. I, I don't know what color that was. Was that white or was it something?
See, it was, it was a yellow. So it was trying to match the color of the house.
As we're doing here. I mean, there is always the possibility of mitigating with um screening too, I mean vegetative screening, but.
So that's actually, um, our longer term vision is actually to put um ivy on it as well.
Right on the house, oh, yeah.
That's what we, we, uh, and this is Randy's ideas, it, it's got it to match as close as we can, let's put ivy on it as soon as we can.
Except, um, I think, wait, um, Virginia creeper.
Would be. Okay, Virginia creeper.
Well, it climbs as.
With Boston.
Well, Boston ivy, Virginia creeper behaves exactly like Boston ivy, but is indigenous.
And it's so spectacular to look at the colors.
Boston ivy actually can, can degrade the structure and it's English ivy that doesn't, but English ivy doesn't stay year round, so. Um, so you took the words out of uh everyone's mouth because that's exactly the process that I feel that should take place, which is. I get you're trying to do a dead match and it's, it's not the easiest thing to find a dead match to a. A material that's brick and mortar and has variation to it and make it blend, so you, and renderings at best. You know, can look a little cartoonish, but they're the best way to do that and I think you're doing exactly the right thing, which is. You, you're going to sample it and look at it and go, what feels like the best solution? Um, and I think that it's, it's very easy for us to go and look at it. Um, if you don't wanna sample directly on it. Have somebody get a big piece of drywall or plywood or whatever.
We actually got this from sample eyes and we put them on already. That's, so we actually started the process with. I think it's twenty colors that Lenore selected and we narrowed it down to.
Three.
Six, and then of the six, we got the, the bigger ones. And the bigger ones on, and the reality is the bigger ones aren't even that, the bigger ones are this big, they're still not that big. Which is why we wanna sample it too. Exactly.
So.
So that's why.
Do like five by five or ten by ten or what, what, what's ideal?
Um, I, I don't, I'm not sure, I'd have to defer to Lenore on that, she'll make the recommendation in the G C, but I mean.
What do you suggest?
I mean, if, if I was doing it, it was my own house, I would have them bring a piece of drywall, apply with anything, something fairly tall. And, and.
And given this is.
Whatever material is around, it's handy to do a large enough sample.
Given the material, there's actually this, it's just like a, it's like a, the texture of the building is a bit unusual. Which is why we wanted to apply the sample directly. That's like, that, that's what we wanted to do, just because we're like, look, we want to change the color of this.
Won't know how it's going to re, it's textured, it, it just throws a big.
That's why we wanted to come speak with you before we actually painted the samples on.
You're already trying hard to land it, so.
Yeah.
Keep going.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think of the three spice girls would be, as much gold.
That's the one actually we liked the most too, to our eye, so it, it just, we wanna get it right.
You won't really know until.
But then, you know, start planting in your property, obviously don't go over the property line, but start planting. American holly so that it grows, grows and it's evergreen and you get lovely red.
Yeah, that's actually what I meant with screening was, you know, I think it's a great idea to put ivy on the house too. And if it could be Virginia creeper, so much the better, but even to put some actual screening in, you know, small trees. Or, you know, and, and in. Before you go too far down slope, because then you'll lose the advantage, but while you're still up, you know, at a high, a high point.
So we were, uh, we're working with um, uh, Andrea. Um, so you'll, you'll be seeing me again with a plan uh for the spring.
Use your landscape at the moment, you know.
Um, we're currently working uh with. Uh, not Gerald, uh, Reynolds.
It is interesting, your house is sort of in the woods and your landscaper has, has sort of cleared every leaf off your property. And so it, it kind of, eh, what we're showing carrot is, you know, leaves are very good for your. Sorry?
Gabriel.
If, you know, if you're a man of. Manage it so much, leaves are very good, uh, exceedingly good.
Has a nutrition for the trees.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
And, and you have these fabulous fireflies and these beneficial insects overwintering them. So it's really beneficial for the birds in the spring to have left the leaves.
And that's on the, leaving it on the gr- not on the grass, right? You're referring to leaving it.
So yeah, yeah, on those areas, the slopes that are sort of slightly grassy, but a little bit, you know, you know, sort of sedgy and mossy, just, you know, so. Cause there's, there's that, you know, there's your property line and it's like black and white, there's this wonderful natural area and then there's this sort of more suburban looking area. Where your house is.
And that's, that's precisely what Andrea is working on. Um, is adding some trees, adding, because to your point, it's, it's, what we, what we think the opportunity with this property, with, with the property is. I mean, there's just, and this is a kind of a broader vision for the home, which is not, you know, it's, it's gonna be a, uh, an even bigger project than we imagined. With the fire, uh, we'd actually, funny enough, we'd, we'd um just redone three of the bathrooms and the kitchen. Which is literally on delivery day. That the ki- we were moving on the punch list, it wasn't final, final, but just, just, uh.
Had they made the deliveries already?
All of it, and all of it was done, like the three bathrooms were done, the last bathroom is being finished on that day. And, yeah, yeah, well, you know.
Good company. Queen Elizabeth had Saint George's Chapel burned down practically, practically at the end of the whole restoration project.
It's, it's just, and it, it has nothing to do with the contractor, no fault, it was just a freak elect- freak electoral fire, that's all it was. Um, so, uh, uh, so any, any of the, uh, but the vision was, I mean, there's just, we'd love to create, you know. Uh, uh, there are ways for us to thicken the forest in appropriate ways using natural.
Oh, understory, shrubs.
And even, even some, some well-placed uh trees, you know, putting a pool in as well, there's the, um. Uh, anyway, anyways, but the, the idea is that there's not, it's such a grand home and such, such important history as well. And it, it, it's on, it's on a fair bit of land, but I don't think a lot of people realize it's three and a half to four acres. And to have, to create it as, you know, traditionally was, or it was an estate.
Yeah.
That is still a five-minute walk from the train. With the pri- and the, I think with the one thing the home has the opportunity to have is just privacy and, and blend in, so we're trying to figure out how exactly to do that. So Andrea is working on that right now with exactly some of the ideas that you guys have floated of, like, how do we, where we place the trees appropriately? Not have it look like a line, if, that's not what we're looking for at all, but it's appropriately kind of randomly mimicking nature. So where do you select exactly do, where do trees goes and things like that? And everything natural, and I, you guys, I know she's done a lot of work.
Yep.
Um, here, so we're really excited about that.
I don't think we need to take a resolution since we're just sampling, right? Do we, John, do we?
You're not making a decision, you're asking him to install samples for you to review.
Your idea of sampling, so.
But we'll make ourselves, you know, amenable and available. Just let me know. Let me know when the samples are available for review and I'll tell the board that it can pass by.
And then once, um, if we complete, on- once we complete the samples and, um. We have our preference of the three, um, if you guys can come by. Would it be possible for us to have an approval and rating or would I have to come by again or what's, what's the process for that?
All approvals have to be given at a meeting.
At a meeting, okay.
We'll make it super quick, so, you know, we can all swing by there within minutes, you know, well, I'm speaking for myself, but I'm.
And how fast can we get him onto the agenda as well, like for instance, post-dating that? Well, if you wanna have a special meeting, you could always do that. I think we would do that for.
Yeah, we would.
This applicant.
Thank you.
There's one last thing, when they do the sample boards, because I've seen this happen before, when they do the sample boards, put the name of the color or the.
Something similar in between, it's, doesn't have to be bolted to the.
Thank you very much.
Hang in there.
Thank you.
T minus question mark.
Yeah, T minus hours. Well, thank you guys so much, sorry I was a little bit late. Oh, and um, the B Z A did approve uh the deck. Uh, we're having plans made now, uh, you'll likely see me again in December or January for that.
Okay. Uh, so now, can we uh proceed to the approval of the minutes? For the, uh, it was the, um, oh, what's the date for the minutes that we are proving?
November fourth.
For the election. Yeah.
Okay.
The day before.
Did everyone have the chance to read?
Yes.
Minutes, so, so I, I did, I wasn't present, so I can't vote on it. Um, but I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Except, except me who wasn't there, so, um, so, um, is there any other business?
Um, just a quick note, I did unfortunately catch uh the contractor at the Hartgrove's property. Uh, using a tech, uh, Azac type uh board on the trim and I stopped him from doing that. So I will check up on him tomorrow or later in the week. So weird. The one on, on East Lake Stable Road? No, the across from the Blothsby's on the bottom clubhouse. Oh. That's Hartgrove's, it was actually Max Jacobs is the contractor. Oh, oh, that one, yeah.
Okay.
And we had approved something different. Um, there was no reference uh on the plans other than matching, you know, the exterior trim. Which was not, you know, plastic like.
That's a shame because the brickwork, the stonework was looking good when I drove by the other day.
So what's the procedure for that, a stop work order and then they?
Well, I stopped, I asked them to change it and they started to remove it. It, there was probably only about twenty-five feet installed at that point.
Okay, that's good. So, um, if there's no other business, um, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting at this time. It is quarter past seven.
Aye.
Aye.